Oh yeah. And David G., come on David to sit by. He's saying. He's giving up his.
Brand new one. Yeah, you look like brand new one.
Dr. Wright, how you doing today, brother?
All right, damn.
All right.
Okay, I want to welcome all of you. This is a pleasant sight to see as many folks as we have that are interested in seeing how things run in the city. So we're always glad to have an over-woke crowd like we have tonight. But I would like to welcome you to the January 8th meeting of mayor and council. And at this time, I'm going to call Pastor Tyler Barrett from Northgate Church to lead us in the invocation, and then that remains standing on the pledge.
Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this beautiful day that you have given each one of us. We thank you for the Christmas holidays and that you have given us a new year. And Lord, I ask you that as we gather in this place this evening, that your will will be done and that your presence will be in this place. Father, may you be glorified and may all of hell's power be glorified. Lord, I ask you that your guardian angels surround this place and this city. Father, we ask you that you will bring revival to this city. May you draw the people of this city closer to you. As we know, your word says that as we draw closer to you, you will draw closer to us. For all of those who are struggling and those who are in difficult times, we know that your Jehovah Jireh are our provider. You provide our needs according to your riches and glory. Ask you that you will be with the city chamber, the people that are gathered in this place. And Father, we ask you that business will be taken care of in accordance to your word. And Father, may we all act as you would have acted for us. May we act as mature people. And Father, we thank you so much for what you're going to do. We thank you so much for all that you've done for us. And Jesus saying, amen.
Amen.
Our pride and allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our first bout on the agenda for tonight is the presentation of the Great God Austin Christmas Parade Awards. And so at this time, I'll ask the City Temple Number 65 to come forward.
How's it going? Is it cold enough, everybody? First and foremost, I'd like to thank the City of God Austin, the mayor and council for supporting this effort that we do every year to bring the community together. A couple of y'all probably heard that term, party with a purpose. We like to consider a parade with a purpose. Each year, we come together as a community and try to bring people together for the Christmas spirit and hope that everyone, at some point in time, may choose leaving something good on their heart and on their mind. And at the end of the parade, the following year, we always give out awards for those who participated because we really, really appreciate you coming out and participating. Now, I am what we call in our organization, the deputy of the oasis, which is almost like the police or the disinformation man for this region or what have you. And I can honestly tell you all that I've been all over, all so many states, so many parades, and I cannot tell you how, how much different this community is than any other parade I've been to. I mean, you all come out when it's raining. You all come out when it's 13 degrees outside. It's just not lucky. I've never seen anything like it. So at this time, please give the mayor and council and City of God Austin a hand for this ultimate presentation. I'm going to do one special presentation, after which the vice president, which is Tony Collin, past president of the county's honor, he's the chief manager, the vice president of the City Temple 65, and he's going to follow with the next special presentation. At this time, I'd like to recognize the God Austin day of time. Is there a representative here? I'd like to present this to you. It says, "We take appreciation for your continued support of the Great God Austin Community Christmas Parade from the Parade Committee 2014." Thanks.
His next presentation from the Parade Committee, this is an award to Coca-Cola, his representative for Coca-Cola. Well, I guess, may I?
Is there a ticket?
Yes.
We'll say two if they say.
This is presented to Coca-Cola for his appreciation for the continued support of the Great God Austin City Community for the Parade Committee.
We'll say two if they say.
Now, I'd like, you see him? Yeah. And our organization, this is the reporter, he's very valuable to our organization. He's much like a secretary. He has to keep all the paperwork, everything going. So what we do, I'd like to present the bad Harris. And the mayor has the results for third place.
Oh, y'all have them again this year?
No, sir. We try to remain objective so y'all know that we can just.
Well, I came prepared this year. The third place winner this year goes to Smith Rose. All right, second place winner goes to Loews, who's a representative. And the first place winner this year goes to April and Struts. Of the grand marshal. Oh, he always said it was like that, grand marshal come forward. Sonny this year served in his 28th, 26th year on council. And he's done a tremendous job, and there's nobody that deserves to be grand marshal anymore. Judge from Sonny Baker.
Let's cheer for his service. Was it back from the New York High School where?
Congratulations. You kept it moving and kicking down. Yes, that's very, very nice. And you know, this year was the, last year, remember the rain and the classic car club gave me a car to call on fire? And this year, I rode on the fire truck from Long Park and didn't have any problems. I made sure I didn't have a.
And who else here from Lamb's High School? This woman representative tonight today? I can't even hold on to that one. How about my brother-in-law? You here today? Fowles High School baby. You don't hear my brother-in-law?
He's probably calling today.
It is one of those.
Okay. Thanks very much for y'all's participation.
Always, how about the Pride Department, they represented today?
Chief Brenner.
Chief Brenner. Chief, have the word.
This is perfect.
This is for shot with a fire, fire fighter. Thank you, sir.
Chief.
He's here?
Yeah, he's here.
No, he's not here.
He's not here.
Do you want me to skip, man?
No, no. They're not.
Yes, we do. It's up to you. You take her, you want to take her?
And I want to thank y'all for all the hard work that the City Temple 65, y'all put on the great parade. Every year, you got people out there, you're organized, and you're ready to go, and it doesn't matter rain or shine, you make sure it comes off and comes off. So thank y'all so much.
Tonight, with great pleasure, I'd like to tell you about this month's employee of the month award. Willie Jones began his employment in the City of God Austin in the New Engineering Department back in September 1996 as assigned maintenance worker. He's been promoted numerous times over the years, and firmly holds a position as stormwater technician. You also say that, you know, he's done street maintenance, he's done all kinds of work for. So he's more of an asset actor, so the main charity department. And Willie is one of those can-do type people. If there's a need that's, that's out there, he's the first to always step up. So anyway, let me tell you about, a little bit about what he does with his work and what happened to it up there. Hey, as, as a stormwater technician, Willie reviews civil sites, rating the drainage plans and applications, and he issue plan disturbance permits. He conducts inspections of permitted construction sites for violations. He prepares construction portions of the annual reports with Georgia Environmental Protection Agency, and he prepares reports to Georgia Soil and Water Conservation Commission. With that work, yes, he carries a badge. But anyway, Willie strives to always have a positive and strong relationship with our community. And recently, while he was off work, he was going down the side of the road, he noticed his family on the side of the road, roving down a vehicle. Well, Willie, yes, he's a mechanic too. So anyway, so he stopped and assisted his, and being a mechanic by trade, he quickly determined the vehicle had a failed water pump. Well, let me just tell you, this was in him. For those of you that know anything about engines, this was in a front-wheel drive vehicle, which meant that you had to break down the whole engine to get the water pump. So it was a lot of work. So what he ended up doing was, he went out on his own and he, he purchased the parts and he made the repair for this family, which would have cost her probably five to seven hundred dollars. And he did that on his own, without any help, with just his, with his own personal money. And he did come back and he asked some of the city employees that he works with, say if I want to make a donation, that's great. But again, like I said, he'd already run out the side, he'd make it to there, okay? So anyway, since the family had very limited resources available to have the car repaired, Willie quickly finds help with the volunteer to fix the car, even if it didn't pay any of the expenses itself. So Willie has always shown this type of behavior. It doesn't matter what the need is, if it's pouring down rain and storms, he's the first guy out there. He's willing to go above and beyond, to extraordinary limits, all the time. And for these reasons and any other, the Employee Probations Committee has nominated Willie Jones as the employee of the month. Willie's got a beautiful family here. It'd be tough for them to come up and take a photo with the mayor.
Will is just another example of the many fine employees that the city has, and we're mighty proud of all of them. So Willie, this is a, this is a plaque you need to take on, hang on the wall. And as you know, your name will be engraved on this plaque which hangs outside of the mayor's and city manager's office, be there from now on. And then this is a little token of our appreciation, which will maybe help pay some of the expense on it. One vote. Congratulations.
This is Roger Street, Queen North Lee Street, Truce Street, to Mini Market Street. The, as we discussed on Tuesday evening, the property owners along this street came to the city and they asked that we could change the name, they petitioned to change the name in honor of Ms. Martin. We've done a lot of things for the city of God Austin, for Fowles County. After tax remand petition, they obtained eighty percent of all the property owners with the favor of changing the name. And so the city is suggesting that administration, that we go ahead and change the name. It takes approximately ninety days or so for the name change to take effect. And I'll answer any questions that you may have.
You're going to be in Lamar Avenue, Boulevard, Drive, Street, Street, Lamar Street.
It's a traffic.
I know, most of it's being tried.
Okay. The, we can, we can, the petition says to change the name of the street from East Roger Street from South Lee Street to South Truce Street. And it says, let me see, making sure that, sorry, I gotta read all the way down through it. But it's my understanding they wanted to change to Mini Market Streets. But if you want to name another crisis, another.
I just heard a little more of it, but we'll find out.
Yeah, we can. Glad you're here in the public comment. We can all, we'll have a suggestion. Any other questions or pass at this time? All right, thank you. Since this is a public hearing item on the agenda, I'm going to ask if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this request. Anyone who would like to speak in favor? Come forward and state your name.
My name is. My daughter told me, David G. Walker, my friend, he was the county commissioner. He told me, no, sit down and enjoy your flowers. That's not me. And my daughter said, no, mama, sit down. But that is, the song I wrote and sang, "It's not easy being me," and I want y'all to know that. And as sick as I am, and as sick as I am, I'm still here. Doctors say I died three times, but I'm still here. So I ask y'all to continue to pray for me and my pastor. And Sonny was there when I was dying, and he's been there all the time. So y'all just, I love you to death.
We'll do that.
Thank you, man.
We love you.
Thank you. Thank you, Larry.
Ms. Martin, I want to tell you, my friend and yours, former county manager Mike Stewart, who you served with emailing today, asked me to tell you congratulations from him.
Thank you, Larry.
I'm still eating all of that peppermint that you gave me. All right, ordinances and resolutions, Mark Barbour.
Thank you, mayor. Pleasant discussion of Tuesday meeting in United States of America, two votes, one is to set quality of the things, and a day for coming in for election, and the other is to neutralize the contract, let us know the world elections to conduct our over-woke third committee election. The fees we discussed, two evening, is seven hundred and fifty dollars for the mayor, four minutes.
Well, he, that's him. She's using his name, and I'm going to ask that she don't use my family's name.
Well, okay, well, you were in there on that Saturday.
That's been so long ago. No, we're not finished. I, I, well, we don't have to go if y'all want to stay in here, because from this point on, we need to. But y'all can, y'all, y'all don't have to go, because this, this is not right. Y'all can go and voice your opinion. What we got to do, y'all and citizens, got to stick together.
I've never seen a city council meeting operate like this before.
I don't understand how we allow the city attorney to control our meetings. They already, see, all of this was done without my face up.
What he do, he don't want to be asked, he don't want to answer questions.
He's not even our attorney.
He's not. He sent somebody in every time, because you went to this meeting to celebrate, and this is why he sent him, because he don't want to answer your question. It's the reason that he didn't come. That's right.
See, he already know what it is. He's doing double duty. But if I find out that he's having another council meeting and he can't be here, we need to have somebody that can represent us.
That's right.
Because Mr. Coleman, Attorney Coleman, is representing very many, a lot of cities that was mentioned in the training on the weekend. So it's like double duty. He can't be with us for being everywhere else, but the money still rolls to his firm. You know, we hired him. I don't even know that man's name.
That's a.
On this thing right here, they didn't really want me coming up in here, because they got me for a criminal trespassing warning over there just coming out trying to disturb the minutes. And then Dorothy comes up in my face and put her folder up in my face, but nothing was done for her. But they get me for criminal trespassing warning just because I'm trying to talk to the council members. And I can't help, because Renee walks out every time I'm getting ready to say something. You know, I can't, I can't be a mayor with this kind of cooperation. So I'm just going to, I'm just got to do what I got to do.
And it looks as if, oh, this is the mayor's office, and they seem to be.
This is the only place they here working now.
And they are changing the lock. Go ahead, brother. Tell me what you.
Yeah, you know, they won't let her in the other offices. They throw her out over there.
Right.
They put her in this place, office over here, and now they're changing locks on it, and now she can't get in there.
Mm-hmm. Wow.
Now they canceled the meeting tonight.
Yeah.
At the last minute and.
Have you ever seen anything like this before, man?
I never. You know, they arrested the mayor.
Yeah, I heard about that.
For that disorder of conduct.
Yeah. What did she do, you know?
I don't know, but you know, disorder of conduct might be.
Anything. That's right.
It's a catch twenty-two.
Right, right.
You know, unless you start cussing somebody or, or threatening, you know, violence or something, that's different. But Linda ain't doing none. Linda did not do nothing.
Why, why you writing the, the state officials, like?
I don't know.
The Secretary of State and Attorney General and the governor, I mean, they got the same problem in Gordon, Georgia.
I don't know why we can't get no help. I tell you, I have never.
I've never seen nothing like this before.
Mr. Willie Charles, how you doing?
Don't take it personal, bro. We, we, you know, we understand.
How you doing, Mr. Willie Charles?
I'm doing, enjoying my job.
We know, we got you.
I hope you find a better one, because you're a better man than this. You're a good guy, and you need to do, you need to show it. You're a good man. You're much better than this, Mr. Willie Charles. Much better. I know, but he's still a better man.
And we can't, Governor Nathan Deal, Secretary of State Brian P. Kemp, Attorney General Sam Olins, I just can't understand, nobody in the state of Georgia will come down, and what are they waiting? Are they waiting for people to get violent? It seemed like that might be what they waiting on.
I don't know what they're waiting on either.
What do you think about, you ever seen this before? What do you think about this?
I've never seen this in my life.
What do you think about the mayor being arrested?
I'm, I'm shocked, I'm appalled, I'm embarrassed for me. I love this place. I, I mean, this is a good place, and the people here are good.
Had you ever seen this before?
Never.
Never.
Never. And I've lived, I've lived in the city majority of my life, and I still haven't seen it. Still haven't seen it. I'm very embarrassed for me. I'm embarrassed at the personnel, the people, and how they're putting people in bad positions.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
We should ask Tommy Coleman, the attorney, to step down. We don't need him. He's a good man, but he, he's all of him. We, we need someone out of Thomas County, attorneys, you know, and, and that's one thing. But I'm asking for the fine of the city manager, she doesn't live here.
Right, you're right about me.
And she's, she's, you can't get anything, you know, I got a secretary that's doing several open records act in Georgia that I'm going to give her, and we're going to see where she's going to go from there, but I'm not satisfied with the way it's going, and I assume that most of you are. It's not right. We're not, we're not satisfied. You know, Jimothy. When the mayor, the mayor is in charge. The mayor's a lead, that high official. Amen, amen. Isn't that right? She's a high, she's a high official, and, and they should give her respect. She won by a fair election, and they should give her respect, whether they like her or not. But they turn around and get up and walk out and leave all of us in here with a lot of questions that we'd like to ask.
Okay, so what's that telling us?
This is the little town of Lumpkin, Georgia. I would ride through and do what I do. Because it must be done, and somebody must do it. They talked about many of these businesses now are closed. The city used to be booming. But no different from many other cities across America. They sent many to plants and Jamba factories and other industries overseas in China and other locations, and that means the American people don't have any place to work. And therefore, many of our young people and old as well start committing crimes. But it is what it is.
I, you asked about the election time. When I ran for mayor, the previous mayor had resigned for whatever reasons he said was held. I can beg to differ, but I won't get into that at this point.
Right.
But we had a special election where I ran against two opponents, and to be brief and short about it, there was no runoff.
Okay.
I had seventy-some percent of the vote.
Okay.
So it wasn't a runoff required.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, so, in, the previous mayor was white?
He was.
Are you the first black mayor?
I am.
Okay, um, do you think that by you being black, are, are there any impediments in the city with the operation from your standpoint?
I initially chose, chose trying not to think that way, but with, uh, evidence coming from other people who have been in this city a while, from staff to residents, saying that, huh, it seems like people are trying to make it harder for you since you're black. So once I started receiving that quite often, then you have no choice but to believe it's because of the skin color that things are more, could be more different.
Uh, are you aware of the problems that we have identified in any of these other cities that I've mentioned to you? Are you familiar with that?
I am with, uh, a few of them, not all of them.
Right. Once again, this is Ghetto Free Press, I'm George Boston Rhymes, and this is YouTube. I'm still in Lumpkin. I didn't know this was the county seat, but anyway, uh, what's your name, my sister?
Mona Hubbard.
Mona Herbert?
Mona Hubbard.
Mona Hubbard, okay. Uh, I'm sitting here with Mona Hubbard, and, uh, she wanted to talk to me, she wanted to highlight, uh, some of the things that we can expect here in the city. Uh, Mayor Gibson told me that she would be a good citizen to speak, and, uh, that's why we're here. Uh, tell me something about the city. Now, first of all, I heard that there's something that happened at the city, uh, with the city council member, I don't know if you're familiar with that?
Yes.
And then, the, the pastor showed me this newspaper, and she showed me that, I think one of the people in there is you.
Yes.
Which one is it, right?
That's me, right there.
Yeah, I thought, right there. So, t, in the headlines in the paper for my YouTube watch, it says, "Local NAACP Calls For Resignation Of Council Member." Sworn Statement Alleges Councilwoman Debbie Stone Called Lumpkin Mayor A Nigger. You know anything about that?
Yes.
Okay, tell us about the city first, and then maybe you can go into lead up to what, what are, what, what happened in the situation. Just tell us, we just need to know. And by the way, tell us everything, because it's not just Lumpkin, it's a lot of cities here in the state of Georgia that has the same problem. Tell, tell, just talk to us.
Well, first of all, I grew up here in Lumpkin, uh, till I was eighteen, I was born here, I grew up here, I left when I was eighteen years old. I came back in ninety-five, at thirty-two, and even the difference between from when I left to when I came back...
You came back from where, where you went?
Well, I was a military spouse.
Okay, alright, okay.
So I traveled everywhere, so I was, you know, um, lived with different people, all races and nationalities and everything. And it's, you know, coming back home to the United States, to see, yeah, to America, to see it's still going on, i- it's ridiculous. And even, like I said, this is ninety-five, and this is twenty-fourteen, and it's just ridiculous. Um, we've had, uh, Mayor Gibson, you know, um, to me is one of the, is the best mayor that we've ever had here, and it's not because he's black, it's just, he's just a good mayor. Um, when he was a city council person, the city councilman, if it was something that he didn't understand, he always questioned it, he never just went into a blind vote. Um, and that's one thing I admired for, about him, that's why I voted for him. Um, it's, uh, they expect for this Mayor Gibson to come in and do something that has never been done. I mean, when the other people, when the white people that were mayor, because Mayor Gibson's the first black mayor here, and it's like he gets so much grief and, like, he's supposed to change the world, pretty much the way they do President Obama.
Right.
You know, it's, it's not like things have not been messed up already, but they expect for the first black man, or the black man to come and change the world. Uh, we had one mayor that was, the mayor a- and the, uh, city attorney called it a conflict, right?
Yeah.
Okay, we had the, we, we just hadn't had anybody that was doing things, and then when companies wanted to come in Lumpkin years ago, they, they wouldn't allow them. So in the process of not letting anybody come in, when Lumpkin did have something to offer, and the process, it has gone down now. So now, there's nothing here, and the people still fighting, don't want anything to come here. You know, we have people here that don't even want a library, because our kids in Lumpkin don't even have a library.
No library?
No library, you know, and they're fighting with, uh, Mayor Gibson because, um, it was a building across, you probably take some pictures, it's the old Lumpkin Drills. Now, city councilor voted to buy this building before they even got a building inspected, I mean, who d- buys real estate without getting inspection first? You know, really? And I asked them about that, who does that? So Mayor Gibson was, is trying to put a library down on Martin the King Avenue, it was a, a area where people used to hang around, but Chief Garcia and Mayor Gibson, it's cleaned up. Now, it's, it's a nice area, and the area was donated to the city, and it's not only gonna be a library, it's gonna be a park, and, and a, and a, you know, where the kids can go play and stuff like that. Um, they don't have anything here, but, um, this council person, this is not her first time referring to as black people as niggers.
Wait, wait, now you talking this Councilman Stone?
Councilman Stone.
Wow.
You know?
Well, well, you're just not, excuse me, I got to join you, girl, this thing, I mean, I already know we had problems in other cities, now this is more of a reason why the governor and the Secretary of State and Attorney General needs to be here.
Needs to be here.
If not, the federal government.
Right.
Because you're dealing with civil rights here. So you, so, so you, what, what has happened other than this incident?
Well, um, she, uh, has made a comment, and people have heard her saying that she grew up calling black people niggers, so there's nothing wrong with that. You know, and, and I, and I, part of the reason why she's an elected official is because us as black people, some of us did not vote. And of course, the majority rules.
Right.
Now, that doesn't mean that she's qualified, because she's not. You know, it's a council member, that was before her, and it was a black man, he won the majority of the vote. She made a big deal for a recall, because they couldn't prove his, um, uh, that he graduated.
Okay.
And pretty much, they, they did that to disqualify him, so that she could run, you know, and, um, it, it's, she's always trying to stir up trouble.
When I, when people say that, when they, when they, when they see you talking like you're talking, they're going to say that you are playing the race card, or that's what they accuse me of. But this is a incident report, wherein it documents, and I will put this on line, that it was, she did use the word nigger, uh, and here they say N-word, but we're getting now, because it's, seem like we are returning back to the Jim Crow laws, I guess we got to use it the way it is, that's why I guess you use, spell it out in the opposite.
Right, I mean, yeah.
And so, so what you are saying is not playing the card, this is...
That's, that's the fact.
Okay, great, I'm sorry.
And the thing about that is, the person that reported her was a, a white guy.
Yes.
You know, I can understand, we, we just got a new fire chief, and he doesn't know anybody here, so he don't know who, who's an ally or enemy. So his duty is to report that type of stuff, especially by somebody that's a council, so he was put in a position, he did the right thing. He wrote a statement, that's a sworn statement.
Do you know that anybody called the, um, the Civil Rights Division or anybody in Atlanta? Because, because for an elected official to do this, uh, it seem like that definitely should have generated some type of attention from some kind of higher authority.
Well, I know that the N, our local, the NAACP has asked for her resignation.
Right, okay.
And she would not accept the letter.
Okay.
Um, the new, the, the, our Columbus News, it's been on the news a couple of times, she would not accept the letter, matter of fact, it was on the news yesterday.
Okay.
And, um, they even went by her house to give a statement, but, you know, she wasn't available for a statement. And when she first did this, and it blew up, um, she left town for a while, you know, she's been pretty much keeping a, a low profile.
Okay, as I listen to you speak, it seem like to me, and I believe you, I've been doing this since ever time, it seems like to me that you are very up on what's going on. What makes you get involved in the affairs of your city? What makes you do this?
Well, first of all, I'm the, the chairman, the acting chairman of the Downtown Development Board, I was, uh, second chair, but then the lady that was there resigned. We trying to get Lumpkin to have some business here, because there's nothing here for it, we have to drive eight miles to go get some grocery.
Right.
You know, and people think that Mayor Gibson has, um, something to do with that, but if, if you have a company that you want to bring here, and I charge you too much for the property, you're gonna go somewhere else. He cannot make anybody put anything here. You know, people, several people have come and seen the thing, but then with this negative stuff like that, you know, business people are about money.
Right.
They don't care if it come from a black, or white, or orange, anybody, it's about green.
Right.
But if they come here and see this division within the town, why would you want to put something here?
Well, uh, the same thing happened, uh, or it be, is being discussed in Gordon. Uh, Gordon Police, uh, was having trouble just to get insurance for the city because of the tension that's in the council meeting itself, and the police, uh, I guess they are worried about the safety of the police officers, because it's just a lot of confusion.
Well, Chief Garcia has really came here and cleaned up Lumpkin. Um, he...
When you say Garcia, is he black?
No, he's not, he's Hispanic.
Hispanic, okay.
Yes, and I, me personally, I don't personally have too many problems with anybody, per se. I'm a point-blank person, I don't sugarcoat things, I don't throw rocks and hide my hands, you know? My grandmother taught me, if you can have anything you want, if you go to work, my grandmother was a schoolteacher in this county for forty-two years. You know, and that's when, she was born in the twenties, and the thirties, when black people really wasn't going to college. My grandmother went and, and taught, went to college, and came back and brought it here, and taught generations of kids here.
Right.
So, and to see how it changed from back in the seventies and eighties when I was a kid to twenty-fourteen, it should be so much better now than it was then. But actually, you know, when I tell my grandbaby about the way, and not even my grandbaby, kids that's in their early twenties or, you know, just getting out how it used to be when I was a kid, they're looking at me like they can't imagine it. And it's really sad in twenty-fourteen, we still playing, doing the race thing.
Well, considering that, everything that you just told us in the history about your mom, and, and for the, uh, newspaper to say, "Local NAACP Calls For Resignation Of Council Member", for using the N-word, uh, as they say, uh, how, how do you feel about other cities in the state of Georgia that have requested the help of Governor Deal? Uh, as you know, probably know, uh, Chris Wright, the mayor of Dawson was shot. And, uh, the, the, the mayor over in, uh, Gordon, Georgia, been removed by Superior Court Judge Robert S. Reeves, uh, and yet they haven't been, uh, she has not been found guilty. Uh, in Megs, the black female mayor over there, have been arrested twice, have received two criminal trespass warnings, been banned from City Hall. Both of, two of her brothers, Edward and Calvin, been arrested, have received two criminal trespass on them, according to a former police chief who had been in, uh, served thirty years, says for nothing. And so, don't you think, as you, and that's just a, a few of them.
Right.
And you listen to what I just said, then you listen to, or not listen to, but as, as I listen to you stating of what has happened here, don't you think that the governor, or the Secretary of State, or the Attorney General, somebody should come in here and at least look?
Yes.
And try to resolve some of these problems, or at least say to the world, and to the other cities in Georgia that we concern?
Yes, that, that's, that's a major concern, because it, to me, history, w- w- history's not gonna repeat itself, because that would never be allowed. But for those, the powers that be up in Atlanta, Governor Deal, they need to take, he, I mean, you cannot know that this is not happening. You know, it's time to put their foot down, because, you know, if you're in, uh, my, if I'm in office, I'm gonna do the right thing. I'll, at least look into it, see what's going on. This is too widespread, this is not just Lumpkin, this is all these small little, you know, small communities, and they have, have black mayors there.
Right, right.
You know?
So, so, say that once again, because I've been saying it, and yet, the new Al Sharpton, Jesse Jackson, NAACP, SCLC, Urban League, uh, Gavio, which I got to Hydra Space, supposed to be in Savannah with them Saturday, and others, it seems to me that to carry on the real dream of Dr. King, it seems to me, not only Dr. King, for white, right people as well, somebody needs to step up to the plate nationally. Eric Holder, I don't understand why he hasn't jumped on the issue with all the problems that we are having. So I agree with you. So, any closing words you want to say before we close this thing out here?
I would like to tell America to take off the blinders, I would like to tell Governor Deal, and any of the people up there that we elected, to, they need to take the blinders off and come and see what's going on in their communities. Enough is enough, and that's it, we're not taking anyone, we're not gonna take the city down.
Now, I gotta close out on this, because you made a statement, and I am a retired military veteran. If you traveled, and you say you did, in the military as a spouse.
Yes.
Where did you go?
Went to Germany, stayed in Germany about six years.
What part?
Um, Wofasheim, Friedberg, uh, my husband was stationed in Kirchgoines, one time in Iraq, they used to call it, uh, my last duty station was Berlin.
Wow, uh, Berlin, I bet you got a lot of history there, didn't you?
Well, you know, actually, when I went to Berlin, it was when the wall was coming down.
Oh, my God.
So I went there with the making of history, I got there when the wall was coming down.
So, uh, I'm gonna help you sum this up in this way, because as a veteran, this is what I talk about a lot on these, on these YouTube channel, is that don't you think it's kind of a disgrace for a person to serve their country? And, and in time of war as well, then to return back to a city in the state of Georgia and have to go through what we thought we had mastered in the fifties and sixties? Don't you, don't you think, don't you think it's kind of hurtful?
It's a problem.
Especially to the retired...
To retired vet, to come home when you fought for, it didn't matter what color, you did your job, what you was sworn to do, and for you to come home and get anything other than open arms, it's a disgrace.
It is indeed a disgrace.
It's a disgrace.
Will you do one other thing, will you take that paper and hold it up frontways to let the people know that what you just said about, um, the N-word, that you are not playing the race card, that this is something that actually happened? And it has been recorded, it's been documented, we have the incident report there, so the people who want to call you playing the race card, by the way you just spoke, calling me the race card, because I responded to a phone call yesterday afternoon, and I'm here today.
Right.
And over three weeks ago, I was, uh, called to come here, but I thought, well, it's not that serious. But the call I got last night, it broke the ice, and so I'm here.
Yes.
Thank you so much. Once again, give me your name, and what do you do, again, just a plain citizen trying to make change?
Plain citizen trying to make change, my name is Mona Hubbard.
Okay, I got two more questions for you, I just can't close this thing out.
Okay.
So, are you a registered voter?
I'm a registered voter, been voted since I was eighteen.
And are you a member of any civil rights organization?
No, am not.
You're not, but yet, you still fighting for what is right, am I correct?
Exactly.
Keep it going, sister, I love your courage, and I thank you, a- a- and, you know, for every, for my friends in Canada and New Zealand, I didn't have to beg her to get on the camera. She, when the mayor, she, uh, I was out with the mayor, she said, "I want to talk about, uh, my city, I want to talk about my city." So she went home, and a few minutes she was back, now you have, as Paul Hardwood say, the rest of the story. And Lumpkin County is the what for this?
Stuart, Lumpkin, Stuart, this is Stuart County, and this is the county seat.
Alright, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Chief, you live? Chief, what? To the City Hall.
Who's the judge?
The same one that's always been, Mr. Judge Reed.
So I need to go and get my things from there, remove everything.
Can I go back in the City Hall?
She can go back in the City Hall as a citizen, not as a mayor.
Oh, so, uh, so...
You cannot, you can go to the city council meeting, but not as a mayor.
So, um...
This is the Ghetto Free Press, and we just understand that undoubtedly, they saying she can not go back as mayor. It seems as if, though, what they've been doing in Megs is not applicable here in Gordon. They say she can go to City Hall, but not as mayor this evening. And they waited until right before the meeting tonight. You call your attorney?
No, I'm gonna call him.
Call him, before you sign it, call your attorney.
That's me, I'm speaking for me, because when I get a lawsuit for this city in my name in there, and Mr. Boone said I talked to him, blah, 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 and he don't convince one side, I got a side too. Now, I know what transpired with the conversation, we, yeah, I'm speaking on my own, I cannot work with people I don't trust in nineteen years. I have never called and asked any legal advice. Now, I know what transpired with the court says we did. I'm speaking on my own. I cannot work with people I don't trust. In nineteen years, I have never called and asked any legal advice, Mr. Boone. Now we get these calls, we're calling them legally, but everything we say to get the information to move the city forward, it's thrown against us. It's over the legal violation. Uh you shouldn't have done that. You harassed her. I have not harassed anybody that's not my neighbor. And I don't appreciate reading her a lawsuit. You harassed somebody. Why not get my side before you do the lawsuit? You're an attorney that represent the city, not half of it. And I don't appreciate that. That's my statement, that I cannot work with people that I did not trust.
Streets Council with them.
What do you think about that?
I have no comments on that because one reason is that she.
What's your name? Can you spell it for me?
L U L A J A C O B S.
And you are a supporter of Mayor Whippley, a supporting resident?
Yes.
What do you think about these people coming out here today with the concerns of the teachers?
Well, they've been on that ever since she's been in office. They are very concerned about Mayor Whippley, but not concerned about the city of Gordon.
What do you think it is specifically about Mayor Whippley that's concerning them?
Number one, they are very disappointed, as they say, in the way that she came into office. And the city of Gordon don't want changes. They don't want any changes. They wanted to remain like it, was, but it ain't over, I think.
Do you think that this is a black-white issue or is this just a leadership change issue?
It's a black-white issue and it's a change in leadership. And anything else you want to call it, that's what it is.
Is there anything else you want to add, Ms. Jacobs?
I like to say to whoever's listening, it's not over yet.
Alright, thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
I appreciate you sharing some more because I really did.
And let me ask you a question. Why do you carry that sign? I come to the meetings and you, you seem like you with it all. Why do you keep carrying that sign?
Because I am very concerned about Gordon. And together we stand and divided we will fall. And it's just the beginning. Gordon will never be the same again.
Wow.
Never be the same again.
Wow, so you had that much confidence in the American way of government or just, you believe it's just the energy? What, what is it that makes you feel so confident that change is coming?
Change is coming because a lot of things that we have been through. There, there are so many people that have been turning out to the city council meeting that have never come. And so, one thing that Mayor Whippley did, she brought the citizen of Gordon out regardless of whether it was positive or negative. She brought them out to city councils.
My most, my, this is my last and most important question right here. I think everybody would want to hear this question here. Do you believe that the voters are disenfranchised when someone such as a judge can take down an elected official? Do you think that's appropriate under our form of government? Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm so happy.
This is the Ghetto Free Press and I'm George Boston Ryans. And you can see here, we're right outside of the city of West Point, Georgia. And in West Point, unlike Valdosta, they have one, two, three, four, five, six newspapers. And in Valdosta, Georgia Metro City, they only have the Valdosta Daily Times for the most part. And in some locations, they have USA Today. However, isn't it amazing where some people want you informed and some seem like they want to keep you deaf, dumb and blind to the Times and unable to make intelligent decisions? Once again, six newspapers, West Point, Georgia, USA Today. The Valley Times News, West Point Times News, The Ledger, Inquirer, also News. Opaleka, Auburn News, LaGrane News, Troot County News, all kinds of news. But in Brooks, in Valdosta, you only have one newspaper. Once again, this is the Ghetto Free Press. We want you to know because you have a right to know. Bye-bye. Look at these newspapers. I am in America's Georgia and unlike Valdosta, Georgia, America's have The All Bennett Herald. Another newspaper, uh The Ledger, The Inquirer, uh to keep the people informed. They also have America's Sumptu Observer. And these newspapers include the black news from the black perspective. What else can we say? Then you also have The American Times Recorder. And of course, it seem like to be a pretty good paper. Once again, uh by the way, you also got the Sumptu News, which is mostly, uh well, it includes a lot of black news. And when we look back down the line here in America's Georgia, we see all of these newspapers. And I do believe that this, it provides for a more informed people. When they go to the polls and vote, they should be able to make a better decision simply because of the fact that they got their information. Then when you look at the equipment ten plus two, Lula Smart Trial, and then you consider the fact that there was no reporters there to record. Oh, by the way, I'm sorry. They also have USA Today. And not in just a several location, but in major store locations, especially convenience stores, you can get a copy of the USA Today. And then of course, they got the little free paper. But, but anyway, don't, don't you think that a city the size of Valdosta, it, it should have more than one paper? Uh and we can only, and with Homamud Air Force Base, Wild Adventures Theme Park, Valdosta State University, Georgia Military College, Francis Lake. And it just is ideally located on our set of the five with a couple of, you know, it just seem like to mean that Valdosta should move up to the twenty-first century instead of being uh more a reflection of the Valdosta eighteen-sixty charter that was displayed on the second floor of Valdosta City Hall uh that led into Mississippi Court Judge Edwards' courtroom, which says that the mayor and council shall pass all proper necessary laws and ordinance for the control of slaves and free persons of color and to suppress and abate all nuances arising from hog, dogs, horses and other animal strain at large in Valdosta. Once again, this is the Ghetto Free Press and I'm in America's Georgia and I'm doing what I do because it must be done. Hey, what, 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 what about the equipment ten plus two case? What do you know about it and what has been reported? Bye-bye, we're gone.